Let's go ahead and stand to begin the meeting for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone, to the budget workshop for 2024. What I've done is created a few slides just to kind of guide the conversation so we're on track. As I've learned from budgets, it's probably best not to go through each and every single line to talk about how much postage each department is going to use, but to talk about the major items and especially the things that we don't have that are funded. So what Gina and I did initially is go through the Form 1. And it just orient you to the Form 1 that council people have. So this, it says published, but really, I'm sorry, that should say department head. Or that's what's on the Form 1 currently. And then these are the new numbers that we came up with to try to balance each one of the funds. This column talks about what we expect to have in terms of total revenue for the year. So when you go through each fund, what you're spending should be equal to your revenue or just a little bit over. And then the next part is the ending cash. So at the end of every year, each fund has a certain amount of cash that's in it that although you budgeted for it, you didn't spend it, and so it just kind of goes into the cash column. And so throughout the year, if you want to use that cash, we can do additional appropriations throughout the year and expend that for whatever we need. The important part to remember about the cash line is that it's important for that to at least be 50% of what you are putting in your budget and what you disperse. Because that is supposed to be for like emergencies. If something happens, to cover anything. And also Gina doesn't want it more than, less than 50%, if we can get there. That's one of the things that the last councils have done throughout the years is built up this cash reserve so that we are fiscally responsible and we have enough in there for any emergency that might come up. So we want to keep with that mentality. So we have the casino, we have Rainy Day. That's going to be easy to go through. We have the general count, which is the biggest one. All these colors on here are, just correlate to another, to the colors down here, these tabs for each department. These that are outlined on this side are those expenditures that aren't funded yet or decisions that we have to make as a council on whether to fund it. So you can see right away, our general count is the biggest one. It's our most important one. And right now, we're expecting 2.259 million for revenue next year. And so far on the budget, we have 2.182. So that leaves us a little bit of wiggle room, maybe like 70,000, to add things in so that we have a balanced budget. So we want to make sure the adopted budget and the total revenue are pretty close. Debt service, we can do nothing about. Next one is lit. As you can see, all these that are highlighted in yellow are all additional asks. And today, in fact, like a couple hours ago, we got an updated estimate for total revenue at 206,000. Last year, the revenue for that line was 116,000. So we got a large increase in our revenue for that. And again, this is an estimate only, it's not official. The county still has not come up with their final numbers. So we just asked for an estimate, so that may change.
They just had their public hearing last night, so they have to form that ordinance for it to take effect. And I don't know when that will take effect, but probably not till fall. Because I think the way Kathy explained it, it's done in certain times of the year.
Oh, okay.
So this should be like the fall. We should know what we're going to get.
Okay. After our, after we adopt our budget or before we adopt our budget?
It'll be after. But we asked the auditor to give us an estimate. So like you said, we're not going to hold her to it. We have plenty, we have some reserves. So I think whatever we fund should be safe.
Okay, so we can budget to this, no problem?
Right.
Okay, great.
I don't anticipate it, unless Kathy has a problem with it from DLGF. But generally, if we have the revenue in reserves, DLGF will not turn you down. You just take that chance, it might come from the reserves.
And that's the risk we take. Okay, so down to MVH. Currently, we have 308 in that budget and we're only bringing in 218. So we need to knock this down a little bit or agree to take it from cash reserves. And the rest is kind of whatever, except for Edit. So Edit, we'll be talking a lot about. We're going to bring in, looks like revenue is going to be about 246,000. And so far, we have budgeted 241. So that's just kind of a general overview. Back to the slideshow. So I guess the first, oh. So the first thing that if we want to talk about or whatever is the salary increase. So what the county did is they put in their budget a 3% increase just so that they could talk about it. And so Gina and I decided to go ahead and do the same thing so we can talk about it. So what we did right here is, these are the numbers. Gina, you tell me what those numbers are again. This is from last year or how did you do that?
Correct. Well, that's just what my estimates were without increases.
Okay, thank you.
So your next line, I think in my original Form 1, I made the revenues what I anticipated and anticipated without an increase. So what you've done is added with an increase of 3% on the right-hand side.
Right. So I, yeah, there you go. She said it. So that's what's.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's what the, all this is with a 3% increase, sorry. And there is a tab here for wages, just to kind of give everybody an idea. Looks like we spend about a million dollars on wages, which is obviously the lion's share of our total budget. And over here, what I did is I calculated the wages. This is like from our salary ordinance right now. And these are all just for full-time positions, not part-time. And, you know, by hours, how much they make. So 1.3. And then over here, I did a 3%, what the salary would be with a 3%, 4%, 5%, and 6% increase. And then over here is just, just the actual increase in dollar amounts. So if you, if we decide to give everyone a 3% increase, it would be an extra $40,000 onto our general fund. If we decided a 4%, it'd be 53,000, 67,000, and 80,000 additional out of our general.
And what's our buffer?
And that's just the general, you said?
That's just general.
Just general. Because certain percentages come out for different positions.
What's our buffer?
Buffer for what?
Between expenses and revenue.
Where this particular has been trying to balance for that anticipation, there may be a little bit of buffer of what we receive. Because what DLGF estimates, they use last year's certified net asset value. So we won't know until those are all captured and they report those, what are actual.
When will we know that? 2020?
No.
I was going to say probably after our budget.
Since I've been here, they used to not know until like after the first of the year, after your budgets already presented. But now they're trying to do real time. So we should know once they get all those, I think they.
We should know.
Well, I want to say by the end of the year for sure because we always get our 1782s back from DLGF by then. I don't even know if I need to go that detail, but we should know by the end of the year what we're looking at for sure.
Which means we approve our budget before we know our actual revenues.
But I think obviously DLGF does that on purpose.
It's all just estimates.
Because they want you to take your estimates, your estimates and use what you have so you can fully capture. Because there may be a change, you might not capture all of your property taxes or your state revenue, so.
Okay. So does anybody have any questions or suggestions? Or so we can, this is a special meeting, so we can make motions and vote on them tonight if we want to. Or we can wait and make motions and vote on that during the public meeting, which is September.
That's not until, so, well, but we have to advertise for the public hearing. So whatever you guys decide, I should put in the Form 2 on Gateway so I can publish what we are looking at.
So we do need decisions tonight?
I would say you guys probably should make an attempt.
If you publish, is it etched in stone then or?
You can't go above, you can go less. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, that's counting, would always go way high.
Right. Which I would prefer as well.
So tonight, we're just giving ballparks?
In my opinion, when you're listening to requests, what can we do feasibly? Requests sometimes are going to have to take maneuvering. Like there are some requests, obviously, we can't bill. It's just, some are wishless, you know? I mean, we might have to take a lease or a bond out for a certain piece of equipment or, you know, some type of project. So there's always that portion of it. We may not be able to do this now, but if we figure out a way, we can do it later. So right now, you're basically going to be looking at your funds, what your revenues are, and try to stay within that revenue. We do have good reserves in general. So, and public safety, and I think, but I, again, you always want a little bit of a fluff in case something happens.
Now, is public safety going to be the same as last year? Is it going up?
It's going up.
No, remember, I just said it's 206.
I was worried because I thought public safety was going to go down or stay the same. From the estimates that we received today.
Okay, that's.
206, last year it was 116.
Yeah. I have to get up and dance.
So, okay. So, so should we go ahead with, does anyone have any questions about the salary increase with 3%? Do you want to keep it at 3? Do you want to do something different? Do you want to ask questions or?
I like what the county did.
Okay, no problem. I can do that in two seconds. This is why I created this. So, oh, right.
I thought you already put them in there, sorry. Did you say you already put them in?
I didn't. So what the county did is this, is the county took the 3% raise from all full-timers, which is this column, which is, I put, well, it says 40,000, but what I did is I took out the increase for that. So what the county did is the county did not give a raise to any of the elected officials, to the council or to the commissioners.
I agree.
That's why I left that out.
Are you agree?
Yep.
Oh, correct. Perfect, okay. So then when I add up the 3% for all the full-timers, it comes out to this number down here, which is 39,256, right? So if you take 39,256 and you divide it by how many full-timers we have?
Well, we're short.
This is not based off of actual people. This is based off of positions. We have Gina, oh, 26, 25 because Gina's listed twice, right?
Yeah, but if I'm elected official, my office utility, I can, that shouldn't change either.
So divided by 25.
Yeah.
So that's $1,570 per person.
Per year.
Per year, that would be their raise. And so what that would do is that the employees that make a lot of money would make less. And then the employees that make less money would make a little bit more on their, on their raise. Is that, that's how that would work. And that's what the county did.
And a lot of.
So, you like that?
So they did a percentage, but divided amongst the full-time.
Yes, and I think I explained it to you wrong the first time, but I learned better last night.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand.
Yeah.
Which, I'm guessing when I do that, I would have to break down the salary people into hourly to figure. Or I guess I wouldn't have to, they'd all just get that flat.
It's just, it's a, they called it, they called it a flat raise. So I'm calculating 1570. I'm sure Gina will check my math and make sure that it's correct, but that's what I'm.
How much would be four or five percent of this?
You're saying based on the positions you got listed?
Yeah, based off of all these. And I don't know if Gina's taken a fine-tooth comb to this. Okay, so 5% is 65,426 divided by 25 is $2,617 per person. So it's, it's a 5% raise, but it's shared amongst all the full-time people is kind of how.
How much raise do they get left here?
5%. Everybody got 5% based off of their salary. So the people that made more got more, the people that made less got less.
So currently, we have 23 full-time positions. How many did you say?
I say 25.
Who, what are you counting, what you're?
Four for the street. 10 for the police.
I got nine for the police. Who do you have 10?
Secretary.
Secretary.
She's not full-time. She's considered part-time. She only works 30 hours. So don't count her.
Gina's going to check my math at a later date, like I said before. I'm sorry. I just, so this list over here is based off the salary ordinance, my bad.
Okay, so don't count her.
I got it. If you can just calculate it, that would be ideal.
And what was your, what was your big number?
1570. At what for?
No, you're 39, what was it? And you didn't include me, right? Sorry, you're.
39,256. And yes, you're in here because you're, because Jess is first.
So subtract my.
So you just need to subtract you and you need to subtract. So you are 1088.
1088, and?
And the secretary is 702.
What's my utility there? What did you have there? 789?
789.
Okay.
So if we go 5%, are we still okay financially?
Okay, so, so this summary, so this tab right here, the general tab is what I, this, all these calculations are 3% based off of salary. And that's where you go down here and you see we have about $70,000 worth of wiggle room in general.
So with 5%, we'd be able to do that? The difference between 3 and 5?
Could be able to.
So it would, yes, I, yes. That looks like about $25,000 difference.
I like it.
So I would like to hold off on that before we second that because I need you guys to also understand the rest of our financial obligations.
But for conversations.
Yes.
I would say historically, we've always done 3%. Every council prior. The only year that we did 5% was last year because of inflation, which.
It's not going down.
I, but I am the person, so I'm just saying.
If you look at Biden economics, it's going down and we're much better off.
Yeah. I'm not going by anybody, I'm just going by me and my comfort level, so I'm just trying to say.
I'm personally leaning towards 3%. Whether we break it down amongst all the employees or not, it, whatever the council wants to think, but only because I've looked through the rest of this. So if you guys don't mind, if we can just go through the next and then maybe we can just come back to this. Because you might want to say, let's just wait and hold off. So this next topic is the current and proposed projects. So currently, this, right now, we are committed to building a salt dome, right? You guys know that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So what we don't know right now is how much that's going to cost.
Right.
So this is a huge range because we don't know, because we don't have the bids in.
Now, are any of these figured up in our budget right now?
So the old highway garage land, to be honest, should be committed from this year.
Okay.
But obviously, we won't pay it until the county gets that building down. Which I told Bridget that if that happens and they don't get it done by the end of the year, we just encumber it to 2024. So it's really not affecting 2024. So that is coming out this year.
Well, I said that wrong.
Okay.
Will these, are these figured in our 2024?
No.
No.
Yeah, the salt dome is, and that's why the MVH budget is over budget. But the rest of this stuff is none of it.
Basically, the salt dome, we're going to have to pull from other places. General is not like it used to be with the fluff without the pool. Because now we've got a pool, we've got a pool loan and we've got a pool. So a lot of times, we used to use general for a lot of equipment or projects. And now I feel like it's just tied up. And, and because now we have that, those two things. And we have the salaries and all that. And the pool essentially is not historically revenue. Like, what is it, right? It costs us. So on top of the pool loan, you've got the cost, which I don't know what.
What do you do with the golf course? How you figuring that?
As far as.
Like the pool, I mean.
So the golf course debt, the debt for the property is tied into that debt service. So the bond payment doesn't come out of general, it's got its own rate in debt.
What about the?
But the actual revenue and the, so if we looked at 2022 and then this year, a lot, the revenue, it is operational. But with big projects.
Yeah.
It's not.
Yeah, yeah.
So last year, we dipped into Edit. Obviously, I mean, we've got some big projects there now.
Two.
Yeah.
And one, we were thinking about doing it out of this year's money, correct?
What?
The drainage, what we think.
You're getting ahead of us, but yeah.
It's okay. Yeah.
It's all right.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure everybody's kind of tracking. This 120 is in MVH for 2024. And currently, we have $100,000 left in Edit for this year. So that's why this 50,000 for the highway garage land, we can take out of Edit, but that gives us $50,000 in Edit this year. So we do have that money to spend. I put this here for new PD and town hall because right now I have no idea how much more that's going to cost. As you guys know, the budget for that project was only for the new police department. And now that the town hall is moving in, we've added a lot more costs because now we have to create those three rooms and then the conference room that wasn't budgeted for at all. So, and of course, when you move into a new building, even if it was just the PD moving in, they're going to come up with more things that they need as you move into a new building. You just know things are going to come up. Don't know what that is either. And so, you know, it would be ideal if we could move into that place before the end of the year, but I don't know. I mean, we, nothing is stopping us right now. So I put $100,000 just because maybe we could spend some of that Edit this year, maybe 50,000 of it, goes to the new town hall for whatever we need. And, you know, maybe not. But anyway, we need to make sure that you think in your mind, these are items that are going to come up that we haven't budgeted for because we don't know what we don't know.
No. And there's some money from the bond that's still available for.
So I did get a current balance on that, but not put it into the budget because that's coming directly from the bond trustee. The balance on that was over $100,000, so.
And that's to finish the construction.
Yeah.
That's the finish of the construction, which is not in here at all. No construction.
Well, what's $100,000 then?
This is to complete the town hall portion of those three rooms and the conference room and anything else that comes up that the police department is going to.
Then, I'm confused and it's easy to do. Bond money is 100.
130, yeah.
And that, I'm confused. Do, can we use 130? Is it figured in?
So 130 is already, as far as I'm concerned, already committed because they need to do that for construction. They need to do the floors, the doors. None of that is in this, but they need to complete the police department side with that money. That's what Greg Marks is tasked to do.
Police department side.
That's what his, that's what that money was for. That's why the addition of the town hall with the three rooms and the conference room was not figured into that budget.
That's the 100,000.
I'm guessing. I'm literally guessing because I want to put some money towards that because I want it to be finished, I hope, we all do, so we can move in, so these guys can move in. At this point, I'm not sure if the county's going to kick us out or not.
Yeah.
I just don't know because, I mean.
I work from home.
Me too.
Been a long time. Okay, so that's, those are, those are some things I just want everybody to keep in mind that we've already committed to. That's why it's called committed projects. Then the other part of projects that we know about, but we don't have the money for yet, is hole 14 and hole 11 on a golf course. So we did get our task orders back in from our QAW and their estimates for construction and their estimates for engineering come out, I think it's 280, to fix those two holes.
What is their fix?
Pardon?
Do they have an actual fix?
Well, we can discuss that later.
Yeah, this is, this is just.
Talk about money and then I can get you that other information.
So this is money that is nowhere to be found, but we need to fix them. Last but not least, okay, is the asset management plan for the sewer department. And Gina says, don't worry about that, we're just going to take it out of water.
I mean, it's for water, I'm taking it out of water.
So the asset management plan is what is required that we have to get, have to get. Once we, and this is for the copper and lead grant. So we are asking, we're hoping that Commonwealth Engineer can put an application for a $20,000 grant to do a preliminary engineering report for free. So the state pays them to do this preliminary engineering report. And we pay $40,000 for this asset management plan. We take the asset management plan plus the preliminary engineering report and add it together and submit by April 1st to the State Revolving Fund to get funding to replace the copper and lead thingy in the middle there by CVS.
We have to pay the 20% upfront, or the 20,000 upfront also.
Yeah, that's fine. And once we get that SL, if, when?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. If we get that, then we get this money back.
Oh.
If we get that grant.
Now, where is the grant coming from?
SL, S?
State revolving.
S R S.
That's where the grant, this original grants come from? Because it's not coming from OCRE, right? Because we can't do.
We can't do OCRE.
Yeah, good, alright.
So the thing that I talked to the council about before is called the Water Infrastructure Planning Grant, which is something that you can get from OCRE. Once we only have two, we can only have two grants open at the same time. I wanted to do that, but I've since found out that that particular grant is for communities that want to improve or expand. Like, hey, we have these two new developments, what do we do? And then we get that planning grant and they tell us, and they do an assessment. They say, hey, we think you should do this, this, and this. It's for improvements, it's for future development, it's for things that we don't know how to do because we're not city planners. This asset management plan is a assessment of everything that you have on hand and how bad it is and when they want, when they estimate that you should replace it. So I think we need that first before we need anything about future stuff. I just didn't understand the difference. So this has now become my number one thing, at least for.
We also need this because there's money out there from the State Revolving Fund, from Indiana Finance. There's all kinds of grants or low-cost to no-cost loans. There's a lot available, especially for lead and copper right now. We can't touch it unless we have an asset management plan. We have to have one. We have never had one in the past because the waterworks has never, ever borrowed any money to any of the projects. It never borrowed any money since the beginning of time.
1893, when we started as a town. Pretty impressive. Pretty impressive.
Way to get a town.
Wow. Even when the original guys put it in.
Well, I don't know about back that far, but.
He wasn't around.
As far, since they've been requiring, you know, since they've been getting funding out for these loans and things. Or, well, they had to go way back, though. I mean, probably 30s and 40s. There's, we've just never taken a loan. Always done our own projects and whatever, funded them ourselves.
Okay, so those are over there. And I put possible funding sources for, again, this is for next year. So you'll see on the line-by-line that Rainy Day, Gina and I put 50,000 for Casino. We put 40 to maybe cover some of the stuff. Cume cap, there's basically nothing in it, so 10,000 is what we budgeted for. Edit revenue is going to be 246 next year, so we can use some of that. And we still do have, I put 50,000 for ARPA because we just spent, that's 7,500. So 50,000 left in ARPA and we can use that for anything. So these are possible things that we can do, but if you look at this side and look at this side, they're not equal. So we'd have to make those decisions.
Can redevelopment help with any of this?
Hey, John, can redevelopment help with any of this?
What can it jump in legally? Well, any of these, any of these projects.
I don't think they do, but I'm not.
Yeah.
I thought redevelopment.
Well, for one, they have to be in the TIP district.
Yeah.
So in the TIP district, there's a possibility they could help.
The golf course is not in the TIP district.
No, no, the golf course can be helped. It could be from Franklin County, though.
The new residential Tiff district?
Except, no, they, yeah, that's right. They're not in the.
They're about to create it, but it'll be residential, so.
You know, the, the salt dome may be in the Tiff district.
It is.
It is, yeah.
It's right there, I mean.
Okay. I was thinking that, I don't know how they split that property up, but or if they did split it up, but, uh,
I will check.
Thank you, John. Thanks, John. Okay. Next slide is, and I'll let all the departments go over this, but just to give you a brief, um, summary of what they're all looking for. So the police department, which all of their additionals are in lit, is a hundred and six total, is a hundred and sixteen thousand, a hundred and seventeen thousand. Um, for the golf course, it's about eighty thousand and those are all listed in general. And then we have the street department is a, a street sweeper payment. So they want a street sweeper, but Gina's idea was let's just do a payment. If they buy it, uh, we could pay, you know, on a loan, maybe. Um, and then, uh.
Did you say it's going to be like over two hundred thousand probably for? I mean, you're looking at a piece of equipment we're going to have to.
Probably used, probably.
Yeah. So.
I can do some more research and get more quotes and view the volume.
Yeah.
And it's just kind of.
But right now, it's a.
It's a one. It's a one. Well, it's, it's important for the council to see what, what our departments need.
Budget for it and then if something does come our way, we could use that.
Yeah.
And if we don't use it, we can use it this, like you do.
Uh, next for street department is, um, they would like a garage lift. And then, of course, the salt barn, which is, I'm not sure how we're going to do that. It's kind of an out there thing. Um, so just some things to consider.
It is. It's a leaf machine.
Not a street sweeper.
Sorry, we did mess that up. It's a leaf machine, not a street sweeper.
So go ahead and retype.
I was wondering how, why we'd have to.
Leaf machine, my bad.
Now can I have it? Since you're not a mechanic anymore, do we have a mechanic?
We're advertising your one. We still have to fill that position.
Just a few more seconds, everybody. Just a few more seconds, I promise.
We're filling that position.
Okay.
So I just advertised for his, for that position.
And they have to be.
I'm still doing that.
Please, please, please focus, John.
We can talk about that.
If I could just get through this, we could get to the departments. Things to consider. The Cume Cap Development Fund, it revenue every year is about fifty thousand.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Every year.
It's a little bit less, but.
I said about.
I'm just warning everybody.
It's about. That Cume Cap development money is committed to the, to the ladder truck.
That's right.
Ladder truck payment for the next thirteen years. So please don't talk about using Cume Cap for anything besides an extra pen or pencil, okay? There's nothing going to be.
Can I get a water cooler?
Second thing, the pool loan, as Gina has already said, takes about a hundred and thirty thousand from general for the next eighteen years. So any capital that, that people wanted to buy or from using general funds is not happening as, as well as it did in the past because we have a pool payment, just wanted to remind everybody. Uh, Gina's already said cash reserves are, are in good shape. Last but not least, other money to consider are the help funds. So we do have eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in, uh, the Hoosier Enduring Legacy Program. And that currently is, is, should be funding the parking lot, Randolph Park, Pickleball Sports Complex and the Business Incubator. But I will put a caveat to that is that if we have a project that comes up that, that happens to fall into this magic list.
Can I see that?
This is a magic list. This is not the correct list. This is the magic list from, um, the, uh, community involvement from the, uh, from the help program. You know how we got the community together several times? They came up with all these ideas on what they wanted from us in our community. If that project made this list, then we could use help money for a project that isn't these four things if we absolutely wanted to. But it has to be on this list.
What's the next thing that we could use it for?
Uh, create programs to support area youth such as Boys, Girls Youth Clubs or Big Brother, Big Sister. That is on the list. That did not make our strategic investment plan. But if somebody comes up and says, hey, I want to do this program for youth, for Big Brother, Big Sister, we could, as a council, decide instead of doing the part of the parking lot in the town park, this is now more important to us, so we're going to spend it on here. We have that ability to make that decision.
The name by one, Salt Dome.
Salt Dome did not make the list. Just want to make sure all your options are all there. Okay, I'm done with the presentation. This backup stuff that you guys all have, oh my gosh.
It's a great time, guys.
This stuff is just big picture stuff that the council spent in twenty twenty-two just to give you an idea of what was spent, so we just kind of know what's happening. Um, and then these are all the different salary ordinance amendments that were done last year, which is a tremendous amount. And then this is what I captured so far for the first six months of twenty twenty-three that what, kind of the bigger things that we've already spent money on. So that just kind of, just to keep in your mind as we go through all of their additional requests. And then this is the one, one time we changed the salary ordinance this year. So if you want me to refer back to these slides throughout this talk, let me know and I'll pull it up. But in the meantime, I think we can go to the, unless you guys have any questions about what I've just said, I like to go to the department heads and let them talk you through their budgets.
Let's start with Shire's. Are you ready?
You ready?
Yeah.
Do you have his?
Born that way. What?
I got a year old.
You got some.
How old are you?
You can sit here. You can sit here. You, here.
You can, you can.
No, by all means.
So Mark, you can sit there and not hear.
I basically told Mark he can't ask for anything because he has a lot, a hundred thousand on a ladder truck payment. What, what do you say?
So, so really, the only thing that I asked for this year was to increase uh, our general fund every year from twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand. Um, the, the ladder trucks already in this, uh, the rescue tools that we bought's in this.
So previous council committed to the rescue tool payment for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five.
So that's, that's there for a couple more years.
Right.
So can you tell us the difference between fireman compensation and fireman man hours? I'm sorry, I just called it that.
So. The fireman compensation, oh, that's the clothing allowance.
Yeah.
This is clothing allowance?
Sounds like.
The clothing allowance is in there.
It's starting going down.
Salaries and wages.
So the man hours they use to, um.
So the man hours, whatever man hours we got, we used to get paid five dollars an hour and we always give that back and that went in for our equipment fund or whatever. This year I came to the council, asked that to be raised to ten dollars an hour and give the money back to the men.
Yep.
And council voted to do that.
Yep.
The clothing allowance is a hundred dollars a year to every person on the department. It's been that way for fifty.
The beginning of time.
Yes, yes. So we never messed with any of that, but we just left that alone, so.
So one of the, um, things that I noticed on Edit, I think from last year, is there are a lot of fire truck repairs that come out of Edit. Are you, I mean, are, I, I think, one of the. Um, is there, uh, do you plan on doing that again every year? Is to just get something repaired and then give us the bill? Because I'm thinking that maybe that, maybe we should be involved with deciding something before you actually get to work then.
So.
I, I'm just not sure how that.
If it's broke, you got to fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of stuff that we have was on that, is on the old ladder truck that we have problems with. A lot of stuff that has been fixed this year, which come down to maybe twenty-five hundred bucks or something like that. I took it out of the general fund that we get, that paid that. All of our maintenance, our oil changes and stuff like that, I take it out of the general. So, you know, I'm not actually coming back and asking council for fifteen hundred dollars or two thousand dollars to change the oil on all the trucks, you know? That, that's what, that's what that general fund was established for, that, um, helped by turnout gear, things like that.
You're talking about this twenty-five thousand, right?
Yes. Um, about the twenty-five thousand.
Do you normally do public safety requests to the county every year?
They let us, they gave us the one last year and they said that it was basically one and done because we are funded by the town.
Can you put on your list of things to do is to submit for the public safety request next year?
Uh, yeah, I, I can submit it to.
Oh, sorry, that fireman conversations is for the fire board. They get a quarterly stipend. I'm sorry. Oh, boy. Thank you. Jeez.
No problem. Um. So, okay, that's it. That's all of my questions. That was all my questions. Anybody have any questions?
County's been kind of adamant in the past, if I remember correctly, that they aren't going to give Brookville anything, correct? Yeah, it's for all the counties.
Do you need a small distribution now from them?
We, yeah, we, we did, we got it for this, this.
This year?
This year.
Okay.
They split up and they give everybody, um, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents.
Whoa.
I only know that because I, they gave it to me and I had to give it back.
Yeah. And I, I went in and I requested either give it to me all in one lump sum now or wait till December to give it to us because I don't like that number coming in.
The commissioners changed it.
Okay.
They didn't know that it was monthly and so they voted to change that to.
Yeah.
I can't remember. I think so. Okay.
Okay.
Good to go?
So it was eight, I, I think it came to like eight thousand dollars and they, they split that up between every fire department in the county.
Yeah. So this year there's four departments that submitted and they're getting eight thousand this year because they got, all the departments got fifty thousand last year.
Yeah.
So. From the ARPA funds.
Oh.
Except what?
They got a hundred.
We got a hundred. They give us an extra fifty to put toward the truck.
Right. Okay, cool. I don't think there's really anything to vote on here. Thanks, Mark.
No, you have to stay around.
I gotta go.
Uh, you want to do Main Street or you want to wait?
Main Street.
Do you guys want to stick around for fun?
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm gonna, well.
Doesn't matter.
I was gonna stay.
Are you enjoying this?
Anyway.
We're gonna talk, uh, we're gonna talk banner.
You got five minutes.
You want to talk banner first?
No.
Yes, yes.
Oh, for real?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's why I wanted, that's why I wanted Mark to stay, but.
I'm sorry, it's okay.
Oh, I was like, no. Sorry, that's not my choice anyway, so.
That's all right.
Thanks, Jess, for your input.
So we have a, uh, Main Street has the chicken festival and fry-off coming up. And we have a five foot, maybe four and a half foot by twenty-two foot banner with a pole pocket in the top and a cable, uh, put through it that we can string between the United Way Building and the old Popper Building or the Daily Scoop. We are requesting help from the town to do that, just a bucket truck. Jennifer English is, uh, part of Main Street Brookville and Rob, uh, likes to volunteer for every project that she's involved with.
That's weird.
So, yeah, so he, uh, he would like to help. We already have anchors in both of the, both of those buildings. We have permission from Mike Seals from United Way Building to, to put it up. Uh, it's a little bit different than, uh, the way banners used to go up. Uh, banners used to be tied in all four corners and then when something would hit it, then it would just break and, and the cable would snap and all the other stuff. This has got a pocket. So if anything should hit it, which it shouldn't because it's going to be hung, the bottom part is going to be higher than the stoplights. So, you know, thinking should be it's going to hit a stoplight before it hit the banner. But anyway, we would just request the bucket truck and, you know, one person to assist Rob to hang it up within the next couple of days during business hours is fine.
Thought there was a thing against.
I wish Mark hadn't left.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Well, I talked, and Bridget heard this story, but I talked to Mark and Mark passed me to the town because of longstanding history of the fire department putting it up and the cable snapping or. So.
So he wants us to be liable for it.
So, and I told Brian that, that, uh, I, I, I'm not, if it's up to me, I didn't want to accept the liability. Uh, but I am not the decision maker.
What liability is?
If someone hits it and rips things off the building.
Or damages their car or hits a person or.
Right, and it's, it's just designed differently because they used to leave the wire up there the whole time and then they would throw the, they would throw the banner up over the top of, so the banner could come down at any time. This is, this would have to be hit and ripped and. The, the old way, there was a cable strung between the two buildings. And we would use, uh, these like climbing clips. And we would clip them through the grommets of the banner and clip it on there. And then there were just two ropes on, yeah, we'd slide it across and then there were two ropes on the bottom to help stabilize it. Okay. I think nine times out of ten, uh, what took them down was the wind. Sure. Whipping around, nothing ever, that I'm aware of, nothing ever hit them, brought them down, it was the wind just whipping around. Just a lot of stories about, you know, semi-hit it or whatever.
Somebody said I got poked out.
Yeah, stuff like that.
Well, I thought the last time they went loud anymore after Michelle Russell's building. There was some damage done to it. Cause it was hit and then it pulled off of it.
Yeah, it used to be Foundation to Pizza Pete. Pizza Pete got tired of it, went down to Michelle's building.
Yeah.
Um, I called Mike Seals last year. He said, go ahead, put, uh, put the hooks in our building, which we've done. And we put them in, in, uh, in our building on the other side of the street, so. Was it just too low at Michelle's? Is that the reason it got hit? Don't know.
Has anybody talked to N dot about this?
I asked the same thing.
Just to be proactive and say, hey.
Have not.
Okay.
Michelle's, when he was taking the wind turns up north.
We can call him.
Why are you responsible for this thing?
Damon.
It's not, I mean, I can.
I mean, the key.
Email him, it's not a big deal.
The, the pole pocket, the, the wire, the, the hooks are, you know, this big round and, uh, stuck in the building.
I can do it right now.
Uh, we'll, we'll take the wire down when it's done. And again, the bottom hangs higher than the lowest part of the streetlights.
Give me that measurement again on that.
It's about four and a half feet by twenty-two feet.
Okay.
And it'll be pulled tight.
I can email Damon Brown with N dot and just.
Okay, sure.
I mean, it's not going to hurt, obviously.
And if N dot says yay, you guys okay with it?
When is your festival?
Sixteenth of September.
So they want to get it up now?
Yeah. Which, I mean, I can do it right now. If not right now, I can do it first thing in the morning. I technically could do it right now, though.
Liability? How, how much damage happened to Michelle's building? I mean, dollar wise, do we know?
Don't, we, we can ask her.
I don't think it's in, I'm, maybe just clear with our agent too and just say, hey, what, what is the worst case scenario?
So put speculations on it that cleared with the N dot and.
Maybe, just to protect ourselves. I don't even know if that matters or not, but if somebody sees a town truck and putting up a wall, that means we're gonna ruin the town.
All the banners.
Yeah, that too.
So, so I would, I would offer.
Four H will be here next.
I can't, I can't speak for Mike Seals, but I would offer our building to continue doing that if there are other groups, you know, if this goes well, you know. But I can't speak to you guys. I can't speak for, for Mike, but.
I would like to see banners again like we have with Pizza Pete and Foundation. Surely that worked good for so many years.
It did. It, it, it told every, it told all the visitors going through town.
How long did that take?
You didn't have to, you know, nobody stopped in the middle of Main Street and had to stare at it because it was big enough to read.
That's, I, I, that's kinda what I'm thinking, but I just wanted to know, for sure.
Fire department's known before. I mean, maybe they want to come get the truck. If they wanna do it, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's, but fine if everything is.
Okay. I'll send it tonight to Damon.
I'm okay with it if we get our insurance agents okay and we get N dot's okay.
For the fire department to put it up?
Yes.
Yeah, they've, they've done them.
All in favor?
I've never done one, so.
All opposed? So you check with N dot?
I will.
Who's checking with insurance?
I will.
Okay. And once you guys talk to each other and they both say okay, then can you just let the fire department know?
Yep.
Thanks. Okay. Let's talk about budget.
All right. Ours is gonna be about a twenty-five, twenty-six minute.
No.
Presentation, but you making a pile for Curtis too?
No, this is for me.
That's for you.
I was just passing them out for you.
I got you.
Thanks.
I got you.
I don't know, am I supposed to make a pile for him?
I do not.
Oh.
So, uh, this, uh, this packet that you have, we won't go through, uh, each individual page. Uh, I'm gonna hit a couple of quick highlights and then I'm gonna give the rest of the time to Nancy. But in this packet, we have, um, our twenty-twenty-two annual report. We have, um, kinda a letter of request, with some stats on other nationally accredited Main Streets and, uh, what their partnership is with municipality. And, uh, and new this year in the packet as, uh, from last year is we have a memo of understanding, which is a, you know, basically a non-binding agreement between the town and Main Street, just to make sure that, um, we're agreeing to, um, you know, really be, uh, your right hand in economic development and, um, and can take down some of the action items that, uh, because we have a paid position, take down some of the action items that, uh, that are in our wheelhouse, uh, in the upcoming year. And then we can review it at the end of the year and, uh, and be able to look back on it. So that's, that's the high-level look of what you have. Uh, I'm gonna let Nancy, uh, talk through a couple of the important details on it and, uh, talk about the request.
See, Main Street Brook, not well, the, uh, Main Street America, the whole concept of Main Street organizations started off thirty-five years ago because of the benefits that were shown between preservation base and economic development. The whole goal is to revi- re-priorization of downtown districts, specifically even more so historic districts, which we definitely qualify for that. And so the Indiana Main Street and then all the Main Street organizations in Indiana, the intent, especially with Oprah, is for there to be an extremely close partnership between Main Street, Brookfield and, and the town. And so that's why we thought it'd be a really good idea to ha- have a memo of understanding between the town and us. Like Brian said, it's non-binding and it's just to, uh, outline the, our mutual, um, partnership benefits, what we do. And, uh, and so that is in the packet. And so we would ask if, um, y'all would read it. Um, any changes that if, what they have made, we can incorporate, incorporate those changes. But, uh, that's one agreement that we would like to enter into. And, um, and then our, uh, the other thing I wanted to point out is that, um, the, uh, we are now a nationally accredited Main Street. There are only two Main Streets in Indiana that were accredited in twenty-twenty-three. That was, um, Brookfield and, uh, Kendallville. And, um, and that was because of part of the requirements for the Preserving Main Street Pilot Program that the, all the community participated in and we were successful in getting that award in twenty-twenty-one and, uh, caused just a lot of work when she started working for Brookfield, so. We can thank the community on that, Jess.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah. But, uh, but I did wanna give you the, the stats and that, uh, twenty-one, there's seventeen nationally accredited Main Streets. We are, we are the only county in Indiana that's nationally accredited. We are the smallest community in Indiana that is accredited. Actually, we were not supposed to get this fourteen million dollar grant, but we did. And, um, but, uh, six of the Nams, nationally accredited Main Street communities, there's still the seventeen nationally accredited Main Streets in Indiana. Six communities get between twenty-one and thirty percent of their operating budget from the town or the municipality, county and town. I wanna emphasize, it comes from both. Uh, you know, redevelopments, uh, such, um, six, three, well, you can read the stats, it's in the letters. Um, but what we're asking is we're asking, uh, thirteen percent where the average, where everybody gets twenty-one to a hundred percent. So I know that, uh, we're all new to this, you know, entering into this agreement and everything. It's some other communities, they've been doing this for years. We have not. We don't have that history under our belt yet, but, uh, but this is what we're seeking. And so what, um, our budget for twenty-twenty-four is a hundred eighty-five thousand nine hundred. You gotta keep in mind that the way we do it is if we get a grant, then we go and buy bike racks, right, for the downtown. If we don't get the grant, we don't buy back bike racks. So a lot of the income is all set by, or a lot of our expenses are all set by the income that we have coming in. So we are very, very flexible. But the hundred eighty-nine asked is basic, our budget is based upon, um, our, uh, what we are anticipating receiving rent and, uh, and other income in twenty-twenty-four. So, uh, we're asking twenty-five thousand dollars as a funding distribution and, uh, and then five thousand four hundred for income, rent and electricity. So that is our S. So total of thirty thousand four hundred, which is sixteen percent of the projected operating.
So you guys get money from the county?
I was gonna ask that too.
Council or redevelopment?
We, we get, well, now I need to back up on that because, um, I mean, other communities get, get it. That's where they get it from, right? Us, because of the preserving Main Street, the Brookfield redevelopment is putting in fifty thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-two and fifty thousand dollars was received in June of twenty-twenty-three. That's the hundred thousand dollars revolving loan fund. So that did come from, uh, Brookfield redevelopment. And that's, and that's.
Redevelopment's one way. Fund Main Streets, though, I guess is what I'm asking.
Yes, in a lot of the communities, it is because it's all economic development and it usually is the, uh, LUGs that, uh, from, fund a large portion from redevelopment, yes.
I mean, I know we would have to be the ones to provide the building and the electricity, but.
Can redevelopment fund this?
Some will have to ask, but I think we got the money.
And if.
Maybe we can split it.
From my, yeah, from my understanding.
It's a big portion for just us, yeah, as long as we are.
Yeah.
So from my understanding, what other communities do is that the redevelopment would want to have, um, some type of agreement.
Agreements would do.
And usually it's, redevelopment is a, uh, it is a, uh, a contract for services.
We can just do a.
So it would be less whatever.
MOU.
And electricity as we'd say.
What are we gonna do when the police station, uh, sells? Aren't you part of the police station building?
We are. Um, so what would we do? Good question. Uh, if that, the whole thing sells and we're out, right now, we just, you know, it's just, and you probably didn't know before, it's just a conference table. It's all you can, oh, you can sit around, but, uh, Shelley Foundations offer the conference table and conference room for us to, to be in. We're still on Main Street. I, I like the visibility of that. I also like the, the fact that if we rip, if we tore out that conference table, we could use it as a retail space, which is another way that we should be getting revenue, uh, as a Main Street. So, um, we have other options, I think. Uh, there, there are other buildings on, on Main Street that, you know, that we.
We've got a few vac.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we've, we've got a choice. They're not ready yet, but, but we do have a choice.
Some of them, we would have to use gas plants, but. But that's okay, you know?
But you have to rent them.
But, yeah, but we can, we can be flexible. We, they would put us down with staying alive if we had to get out tomorrow.
Where's staying alive?
Uh, the basement of the foundation.
Right.
There's a basement there?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. Totally off subject. I had no idea there was a basement there.
And, and for us, right, the, we very much want to have a presence on Main Street. It's, it's very, it's fantastic where we're at and being able to utilize that, that building, that space. I mean, that's, cause it's very easy access. For, for us, um, we, as Brian would say, we will work, we would work out of a garage, right, to be able to provide the services for the community. So, um, so most likely, if we're no longer in where we're at, we would go to Shelley's.
And I, and I.
Less money.
And I have, I have talked to her about putting a sticker on the outside of their window so that, you know, we still have that presence on, on Main Street and she's, she's agreeable to that as well. She's, she'd wanna make sure that we had a spot should something happen.
So. Good, thanks.
So I will take that for redevelopment.
So what are you gonna ask redevelopment for the whole kit, little twenty-four?
I'd say go high.
Twenty-four thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, what if redevelopment says no?
Well.
Are we willing to say yes? Contingent on it? Redevelopment taking some or?
Talk about it, you know?
Or I'm just gonna say if you could say what you're willing to do.
That's what I'm saying.
And then it's there in case we, though, that says.
How soon do you need a commitment?
Well, like Nancy said, we, we, you can read the memo of understanding and add to it if you wanna add to it. We just, we just put a couple of things in there, I think, this week that, um, would take something off of your plate and, and put it on ours. So it's just, um, it's kind of a working document that we, we process. As far as a, a date and time, this is, we're on your time because this is your budget thing, so. We're, we're sustainable.
This wouldn't be until next year, so you're saying?
Exactly.
So if you look at Edit, so we're gonna make, the revenue for Edit is two forty-six and what we, Gina usually does is, is, is allocate two thou- two hundred thousand for different things that come up throughout the year that you just cannot anticipate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's kind of a given there. So, um, I went ahead and put the twenty-four thousand for Main Street and then this is the ten thousand for the normal annual PAMP, that looks at the inspections, inspections of the streets we do every year. And then this is the mulch that, uh, Rocky was asking for, for the playgrounds. So if you add all that up, it's still only two forty-one and we're still making two forty-six. So I feel like it's within at least what, what we're doing. And I, I personally value Main Street Brookfield. I, I like where they're at. I like it's the tiniest, little silliest room in the world. Um, and I don't know if anybody else, I mean, it would, it's just so tiny. I don't know who else could use that besides them, but, um, I like them on Main Street too. Um, I just, without, without their presence on Main Street, I mean, I just think that they add so much. I do feel like they are in economic development for us, cause the, the three of us, four of us, whatever, five of us.
What?
Can't, the employees for the town can't do what these guys do.
Yeah.
And they bring an army of volunteers and they do it because they believe in the mission. And, uh, that's why I think that this is legit to, to help them with, with what, cause they're, we're just helping them help us as a matter of, of, you know, I just think they're helping us, so.
And our best, um, our best volunteers are the ones, I mean, who all that have lived here hear this. You hear people say, man, I love this town. We hear that, send them to us because we'll put them to work. And, and those are the ones that have just been the best so far. Uh, you, you're walking down the street and somebody says, man, what a nice, I love this town. They're, they're quickly Main Street volunteer for us, so. And we hear it all the time.
You guys got a good group.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I'll try to get Todd to give us some.
Yeah, if, if we can, um, I, I move to approve this twenty-four thousand from Edit and then if you can get, um, redevelopment to go hapsies with us or something like that to, so that you guys get used to having it come out of your budget, then maybe we can kinda move forward. That's my, that's my motion. Did I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Those seconds, all in favor? All opposed? We're good. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
When you do the quote's caption, does it come up hapsies?
I hope it does.
I have some.
Next. Who's next? Who's next? This is, thanks you guys for coming.
And, hey, thank you. The, one thing I do want y'all to look at is, is communities, that's on worksheet, it's in there. Because we do a lot of things behind the scenes, right, that y'all aren't necessarily aware of. But it all, of course, to maintain our accreditation, Indiana Main Street has required us to accomplish certain things. And, and that's, that's what this is all about.
Thank you.
We're gonna give this a second.
Okay, thank you. Who's next?
Tim might be easiest.
Tim?
We, we can't do anything.
Anything Tim wants?
Yeah.
It's water and wastewater.
Thank you, Gabriel. I have this, everyone.
And here's that.
The, the biggest, the biggest item is the, uh, is the asset management plan. It was a, originally put down ninety thousand, but, uh, since then, we've gotten several quotes. It brings it down considerably more. But if, once we get that, that opens us up to, uh, grants, just any kind of low, low cost to no cost loans. So that, that's a must. We, we have to have that. For lead and copper, um, replacements, they, the federal government has all kinds of money out there, but we get it first of all because we don't have an asset management plan.
And we need an asset management plan for wastewater and for water. They're two separate things.
Yes.
Is that ninety for both? Oh. I said, is the ninety for both?
It's twenty-five each.
I see it.
It's actually twenty-five each. We, we've got a quote that'll be coming up at the next meeting.
That we can approve at the next meeting, you know?
Yes.
As long as somebody says there's enough money, let's, let's bring it to the next meeting and get that started.
And just historically, we've never truly budgeted water sewer projects because we do what we can afford at the time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it doesn't affect DLGF in any way, cause it's not attached to a tax rate. Um, so I just, but those are things that obviously need to be looked at at some point in the future, but with the asset management plan.
Are those spuns healthy at this point?
Uh, yeah, I think water is fine. Um, we do have a SCADA system. We haven't paid for that yet. Um, I don't know what the status is. Do you?
I just talked to Doug Ludwig, uh, last week. They have put us off until the end of September. He said if not, then October for sure. It would be up and running of this year.
And what is this again?
The SCADA system, it's a computerized system to monitor the water levels.
Did we already buy it?
Yes.
And it's just waiting for the.
Seven years ago.
My first year, maybe?
I took that. We have a CD out in anticipation for it.
They did.
It does not happen.
Several years.
How do we have it and not pay for it?
So we have. We didn't get it yet.
It's not, it's not up and running.
There are parts of it in the plant.
But not complete.
But not the whole thing.
Not complete.
Bits and pieces, if you will.
So all we need is electricity stuff, electrical work, and then it'll run?
I think most of the electrical work is done.
That's good.
We had a problem with some SIMS cards and we're getting into the territory here that I don't even know what I'm talking about.
Okay, that's fine.
But we've got it taken care of. So I asked Doug if he'd received those cards yet. He said, no, he hadn't. So he called the company and he assured me that by, we would have it up and going by October.
That's good.
The only, the only utility I'm concerned about is sewage and that's just cause we've had a numerous amount of expenditures this year that were costly. But sewage is our biggest revenue as well, so it's a lot more money than, um, water, so.
We have a, we have a small brush down right now. It's nothing like the big ones, though, so I'm not really too concerned about it, but, I mean, we're, we're, I'm getting quotes for the parts right now. But this particular brush, nothing has been done to it since.
The beginning.
The beginning, yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Nineteen ninety-two.
Okay, that's good.
It's every, bearings, everything are all the original.
That's when they did the plant, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it, when they remodeled the plant, that's the original.
So, not too shabby for-
Are you getting any applications for your vacant water position?
Yes. Now, I have an interview scheduled next week.
Good deal.
I got a couple more today, I should have sent them to you.
And are we working to get somebody else accredited?
Like a licensed operator?
Austin is in class, his, or, his last class is tomorrow. But I, I still, I, things have changed with certifications. I don't know, it used to be after you're there, one year you could be certified for your distribution license and then you had to wait another year before you could do your actual plant license. I don't know if that's changed and he can get both licenses now. I, I, I started to look into that today and I got pulled away on something else, so, um, I, I, that's, that's something I have to look into, but he's taking his classes, one of the last ones tomorrow, so, and then I don't know how long after that he can take his test.
But do you have a gathering of certified applicants?
No.
So, this high school tank painting for four hundred thousand, is there any way that we can figure out if that's true or not true?
Can I paint it?
No doubt. I'll paint it for that. I'll paint it and call you on for that.
You gotta get inside it, Harold.
That's all right.
We can get a tank there too, it's fine.
Yeah, I, I, I still don't have another quote on that.
Can you find another contractor or something?
Yeah, that's what I mean, I-
Okay.
That has to be done every, what's that timeframe?
Well-
Ten years.
I thought it was ten, but-
It's supposed to be every ten years.
And we're behind.
The one at the, the one at the high school still has wax in it. They, they used to wax the insides of it.
That-
So, it wouldn't rust or anything, but over, at winter you get a big slab of ice in there and it raises and lowers with the water and it scrapes that wax off and things, so.
Dang it.
So, the wax was a good option.
We haven't, uh, we just haven't had it looked at. It kind of slipped through the cracks.
So, it's good.
Okay.
You know about the other technology, it's where they can go in and can line it and ninety percent of the pipe can be rusted and it's still-
What we had done to the reservoir tank was they, they went in and they removed every bit of the wax and they put some kind of epoxy or something on it. So, it doesn't have to, you don't have to worry about it waxing, you don't have to mess with that stuff and-
What is that option? That's an option?
Yes. And that's, that's what we did the last time, it's pretty expensive in comparison to just having it waxed, but, um, I, I think he's thinking of a, of an elevated tank or something, unless things have gotten that expensive in the last fifteen, fourteen years. I can't imagine the price.
Isn't that crazy?
Thank you.
Isn't that crazy?
It is.
The one thing I think we had a question on is the new truck. The, the little Ford Ranger truck is from what year, nineteen fifty?
Yeah, if you, twenty-five thousand for a truck? I mean, wow.
So-
I, I had more than that on there, it's just a wish.
Just, we need a new truck. I mean, that truck, we're gonna run that truck until it dies, right?
Yeah, twenty-five thousand, that's a plan.
Are we saying new?
You, you.
For us, or?
Yes. We're saying a different-
Are we saying brand new or?
New to us.
You ain't gonna buy no new one for that.
Maybe we can get one from the county when they wanna ta- do an asset management change or whatever, we'll just take theirs.
From the county?
Mm-hmm. Maybe.
It, it's probably gonna be like ours, it's gonna be more out of town.
I don't know, County's got a lot of money. Okay, that's just, we're gonna run it until it dies, I just wanted everybody to understand. It's, at some point it's gonna die, we're gonna have to get it.
Sauce keeps getting louder, I would like to have a muffler put on it.
How about some earplugs?
Those were like forty-nine cents.
Maybe it's the holes in the floors.
I don't know if any holes in the floors.
Oh, I'm just-
It's okay.
Rocky, well, yeah, well, there is one.
Rocky fixed it.
Thanks, Rocky.
Thank you, Tim.
Get on that.
Thank you for that briefing.
Oh, God.
Is there anything else?
If you have any questions, I mean, that's, that's it. Asset management plan, that's one of them.
Big guy, okay.
We'll do that the next meeting. Okay, who's next?
I'll go next.
Rocky's still in.
Rocky's sweet.
To the point.
Well, you know, Brent, Brent started this, so I'll just follow him, let's see here. Obviously the playground mulch. And then, uh, the garage lift, but we can touch on that now. So, and this lift here that he has, it's designed that where you can lift the mowers up as well, so it's easy for us to get the weight off. And it's just a backer arm that comes with it and, uh, it's able to lift every, even our bigger truck. So, we'll do our, from the mowers to all of our vehicles, so we'll get some up. That way we can inspect everything a lot better too. So, and, uh, he's got a sordid safety signage, um, like a barricade, bin marking and road work ahead. I don't know if you've seen all of our signs lately, they're very faded, nineteen seventies probably.
What's the amount on there for that?
Uh, the amount for he's got is forty-five million.
Okay.
I think we just put that into street supplies and materials.
Okay.
I think we can also use local road and street for those things.
Yep.
So, I, I don't think that's like a big-
That's not an issue.
Yeah.
That's him.
Keep throwing stuff in there, Rocky?
I was gonna ask St. Louis Council if we could use local road and street for that lift and they said no.
No. Hey, we didn't ask though, good job, Gina.
I mean, I'm like, it's to work on highway equipment.
So, uh, you wanna talk about your leaf blower?
Leaf picker-upper?
The leaf machine?
Sorry, leaf machine?
I'd like to do a little more research myself.
There you go.
It's just kind of, Brent just kind of come to me and asked me what I thought on, uh, used one or something would be. And earlier that year, there was a gentleman come down, I got his card, I can't remember his name off the end. He was talking about a brand new one they had and I was like, "Oh, it's something like that, right?" This is kind of happened there. So, I tried to get two or-
I moved to approve that.
And no, it's like, so I just kind of, just told Brent, I said, "Just throw that one out there and we'll, you know, check into it," so, you know, maybe, maybe a hundred thousand more, maybe a hundred thousand less for these that use them. But what that does, what we're looking at here is, our leaf machine we have now is a three-man operation. It's a pull behind and this one, wanting to look going to the beginning, takes one person to run it.
Wow.
And it's all, he operates it all from the cab, all from the screen and everything, so.
And I will say, just, I, I know this is like a dream, but I will say in their defense that during that time, there is no taking off, there's no vacations to, I mean, it's, it is a three-man-
It's a three-man operation.
It is a three-man operation.
You've got a guy kind of, gotta run the rig, gotta run the chute and a guy run the jackal, so, you know. And then the safety issue, the guys are back there, you know, behind and, um, and this too can also be used as sucking out storm brings because it's got the vacuum, so it's kind of two of one.
Two for one.
Two for one.
So, if, if it's not an emerging need, uh, what we can, can we do this with local road and street, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's just, local road and street is not a large revenue source, so-
So-
Anything we do with that, we do have a nice balance in there because we've got the K and crossing grant pretty much every year since two thousand and twelve, I guess. So, it's got a nice little balance in there.
So, currently local road and street has seventy-four thousand and this year we're gonna make, the revenue will be twenty-three thousand, so that is almost, um, well, it's not a hundred thousand because we're gonna have to spend money out of it, but, um, we could, we could kind of tag this maybe for, uh, like a half a payment or something like that for the street sweeper if you wanna kind of really push that for next year. Whatever. I'm sorry.
I mean, it's-
You know what I'm saying?
Right, yeah.
It's just important for us to set some money, we know this is here, let's set it aside, let's keep it, let's not waste it on stupid stuff because we're saving it for something that you really want later.
Right, 'cause our, the machine we have now is every year there's something like, uh-
I'm amazed it runs.
Me too. Uh, yes.
Have you seen it?
Okay, so we're gonna-
Have you seen it?
I'm gonna put leaf machine twenty-five for local road and street.
You're right here.
Okay.
And then he'll do some-
It'll be a little research, we'll get a lot more later.
Yeah, and he'll have plenty of time.
We're pretty lucky, I feel like, we're very lucky.
Stormwater is a deal.
Soon.
Yeah.
We don't have much in stormwater because we, we collect very little monthly, but, I mean, there's a CD in there, but I don't, redevelopment has some stormwater projects in mind somewhere too.
Well, there's that one over there where Brent's there, he used to do it.
Okay.
Like Todd said, we aren't gonna fund a secret development.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't like, mm-hmm.
And also we're doing the one down by Shermer's, we've already done part of that.
So, we need to do phase two down there?
Yeah.
So, I know last time we kicked in for that, which took a large portion of that because we had some, but I didn't know he would request more.
Depending on, on what happens on Seventh Street, you may be using stormwater funds. And then, and then possibly on Sixth Street the next year.
And Fifth Street the next year?
Yes. If that's what it takes-
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
To keep this water-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
From going into where it's not supposed to.
Well, there's not that much, so don't get too happy.
One street maybe, one, one intersection on each hill.
One of our stormwater rates.
One a year.
It's just one right now that-
It's just one a year, true.
Yeah, once, one a year. But, but, that's, I know what I'm thinking about on Seventh Street.
So, are you, Gina, are, did you say stormwater when we were talking about the leaf blower?
He said it could suck storm drains, so, because if that could be beneficial with the painter.
We could use the stormwater for that too?
Correct.
Sweet.
As long as it pertains to the storm. If he, if he looks at a machine and says what it says it does, then-
Okay, got it, thank you.
It's a possibility.
So, the next issue, so we're gonna table that for twenty-twenty-five, we're good? Okay.
Good.
Everybody's good with that?
Mm-hmm.
So, we need to talk about this garage lift because, um, in MVH, uh, MVH currently we're gonna bring in two hundred and eighteen thousand and we have a budget of three oh eight because we have that hundred and twenty thousand in the salt barn in, in MVH for next year, so Gina, what do we do here? Do we, you, do we use the other fifty thousand in Edit for the salt barn this year and then take this hundred and twenty down by fifty?
Well, I guess what Council needs to decide, if the garage, if you really want the garage lift, then we need to find it from somewhere else because that is a lot.
And so, a lot over. It's eighty, eighty, ninety thou- almost ninety thousand over our revenue.
And we do have a little bit of a balance, but-
Yeah.
Historically, MVH does not provide a lot of revenue. Some of the revenue that comes from the state, half of it has to go in MVH restricted specifically for paving, preservation, driveway construction, so I asked if we could change that by opening some, he said no, it's that shit.
So, Rocky, are, are we still going off of the idea that the salt barn's gonna cost a hundred and twenty? Cause that is really the wild card for us right now?
Uh-
We don't know. Could be-
Uh, it's exceeded way over a hundred and twenty.
More than a hundred and twenty?
A lot of concrete, that's what that-
Can, can you get me a better figure so I can get a read?
I've got, uh, three concrete guys bidding on it right now. And I haven't, I've got anything back for me yet, so.
What, well, it'll be the third Monday of September when I go talk to them.
It's gonna be there for a while.
Can you give me something closer or tell me something closer?
I hope that, maybe I can talk to Jeremy or Dennis or, uh, one of them and say, you know, can you give me a roundabout idea?
Yeah, yeah.
And as far as like the building materials, I mean, like the metal that goes around it, there's going to be like a felt type liner that's on that, that is to keep the salt from eating the metal. So, that's usually about two or three tons more of the cost.
So, currently where the salt is sitting, and this, I have zero idea when I ask this question, but currently where it's sitting, that's not a-
It's not a good idea.
For how long?
Well-
I'm just saying, hypothetically.
It's, it's sooner the better.
It's already corroded.
I'm not saying it's a good idea, I'm just saying, is it damaging?
It's trued over on two or three of the metal posts right now, so that's not, yeah, it's definitely-
That's the question, okay.
I'm honestly not a fan of budgeting for something, I have no idea that's gonna cost.
Yeah.
Would you be more comfortable?
Do you, I mean, this garage lift, I mean, is that?
He's got a part number here, so this is like, this is pretty much a-
A good number?
Vent pack fifty wood, yeah, like he's-
For the lift?
For the lift.
Is that a necessity, I guess is what we're saying, like you have to have that? I feel like we have to have, I'm just saying, I feel like you have to have the salt in, you know what I mean, like?
I, I guess what I'm saying is we are not gonna be able to fund this. If, if that salt barn is in fact gonna be what they think it could be, we're not even gonna be able to fully fund it from MVH anyway, so.
Well, we can, Gina.
It is news.
We can, we just have to take everything out of our cash reserves and that, that's not a good idea.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is, let's, we can push it down the road. What, until we get some definitive numbers.
The salt barn?
And know how much redevelopment's gonna kick in.
And then, what, when, once we know what we're looking at, then we can decide, well, then later, maybe next year we could do additional appropriations with what we've got in reserves.
For the garage lift?
The barn thing. So, you guys have to decide what's important, you know, I, I don't know what you-
Well, I've been here thirteen and a half, almost fourteen years and done it without a lift so far, so I've been a thousand years, not thought of it.
That was my question.
Yeah.
But I didn't wanna say that, like I get it, you know, but-
Whoever takes my position now, they may say I'm a liar, but, you know.
We're gonna train them, we're gonna train them that way, so they won't know.
Right on here, good.
But no, I, I'm willing to do that, so you know that we're gonna be all right with the bit of salt in.
Okay, so we're, we're okay with the garage lift at zero for now? So the next question is, is do we keep this one twenty in here?
Yeah.
Or do we, yeah. And no.
Or you can put your magic number, whatever makes you most comfortable, cause obviously, we're gonna have to search for other.
We have no number. I'm okay with one twenty, cause I've been looking at it for a long time, because there's nothing else to look at.
There's nothing else to go by.
We got nothing to go by.
But didn't he say we're gonna exceed that by a lot?
Yeah, but we don't know.
We have no idea.
I don't know what that number is, so.
Cause this is thirty-eight, thirty-eight wide, forty-eight low, and I believe if I was looking at the. If I'm reading right, the base walls are three foot wide. And then you're talking like six foot wide footers.
Right.
Because then the then the building will top, and then concrete from the back all the way out to the street because of. Having to, you know, be able to get the salt in and out of there, it need to be pushed in and whatnot, so I mean, there's a lot of concrete.
I uh, I I'm able to keep one twenty in the salt barn just because we have absolutely no idea what else to put. And I'm okay that if it's, looks like it's gonna be about eighty, that we might have to take out of cash reserves, but I think this is something we might be able to play around with. Um, is there a second?
If you're gonna put, you know we're gonna have to raise this, why not raise it up to one fifty or something, be closer to what it would be?
Well, we could put three hundred in here, really. But. We're trying to keep it as low as possible to keep it kind of.
The O P F will fund it and will not look at it if we have the cash reserves to support it. But if you're getting into cash reserves, you're pinching yourself.
Right.
Like, you don't, you wanna have a little bit of a.
A cushion, I think eighty is is, I mean, I'm comfortable with that. If you wanna do a hundred thousand out of here, that's that's, yeah, that's right at the limit. Uh, that that's uh, that they recommend that you keep um, half of what you distribute into in this. So that's why I thought maybe eighty might be, at least would have more than half, and that's good.
Why can't we just know we've got it if we need it? I mean, we're just putting a figure in there.
Well, we know if it is more, it's not all gonna come out there anyway, so that's fine. She made a motion.
And I second.
You second, sorry.
Second, sorry, um, all in favor? All opposed? So we're gonna keep one twenty in MVH.
Okay.
Okay, got it. Okay.
So when I go to redevelopment, how soon do we need this money?
I would wait until we get some.
Until we get some quotes.
Tomorrow, John.
It's a general idea.
Yeah, it's, I would, because we truly don't, I mean, yeah, it sounds scary.
It does.
And then I mean, way out of line, I mean, I'm just thinking because everybody's talking, what is a hundred and eighty a yard now or something? Sixty, hundred and eighty, something like that.
They've are using the Burkeville plan again, so.
Yeah, they'll definitely be using it for this one.
So the the last question for Rocky.
It means that they're making some money.
Uh, the last question for Rocky is seventy-four hundred out of edit for mulch. Good?
Yeah.
Good? We're good with seventy-four hundred for mulch out of um, for out of edit for mulch? Okay, now we're good. Thank you, Rocky. Anything else?
Well, since that was that easy, I don't know. No, that's that's all.
Oh, sorry, uh, la- I'm sorry, uh, twenty-five hundred for cemetery stone repair.
Oh.
Oh. Motion to approve. Second, all in favor? All opposed, twenty-five hundred.
What's that mean?
I made the motion, I think.
I thought it didn't matter.
And that one of.
Twenty-five hundred in uh, in general for cemetery stone repair is approved.
Okay.
Grace?
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Rocky.
I don't see the list, but okay.
I think Rose threw that out there, I think initially that because they used to have something in general for that, Don Dunleavy, I think, was in charge of that.
Why?
Um, and Alaska, I don't think.
Not being.
I don't know if it was Chuck and.
They're not here anymore.
No, but whoever did the work, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm like.
I haven't paid him in years, so I don't know, he just did it.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we got police and golf. Left. Who's first?
Go ahead, Tony.
Go ahead, he's done.
Who's gone?
Terry's gone.
Okay, you have, what was it, one sixteen up there, is that what you have?
I think we put your normal appropriations, and you didn't even make decisions on already in.
Right.
So these are things that are gonna be. Council decisions, I guess, cause everything else is pretty much. Standard.
This stuff is all standard, we just put it over. This is the.
Did you take away the one, the nineteen, is that where you came up with the one sixteen?
I don't know what you're talking about, was one sixteen?
You said the budget was one sixteen.
Oh, this little thing, sorry. This thing, these, that was just an addition of all the things that were outside of normal stuff.
Okay. Um, I guess I'll just talk the, some of the big thing items, the line items are, have pretty much been the same with Gina and us uh, over the years. Um, the K nine program, I was asking if the town would uh, be able to put ten thousand towards that. Um, I need roughly to get it up to around twenty-five to thirty thousand to get that program started. I think we got around thirteen or fourteen thousand in it. Um, if that's not possible, that's fine. If you guys wish us to continue to do some fundraisers and keep raising money for it that way, that's that's fine, too. So uh, that's one of my ticket items. Are we talking like individual items before we just keep moving on, or?
Well, I think it might be helpful if you, if all of these, from all of these, because they're all in the same lit categories, they're, the orange ones are are the other ones. Are the, I just copied the orange things onto this file. Could you talk about the the one that's most important?
Well, there's.
For, like prioritize them, you know what I'm saying?
Prioritize number one would be my uh, uh, vehicle and my weapon.
Okay, hold on. So this would be number one? And the weapons?
This is number two.
Okay.
Where's those new firearms?
Yes.
Okay.
There it is.
Yeah, two.
Okay, thanks. Okay, then, okay, so let's talk about the police vehicle, I guess, since it's number one.
So we have a car that we nicknamed the Chicago car, cause that's where we bought it, and we've had nothing but problems out of it. Uh, I could get long, I could get a little bit uh, more longevity out of it. I need a pool car, so. What I, what I would suggest is that we purchase a new car and we turn that into a pool car, so when the officers have oil changes. Or something goes wrong, we have that car at the police department, so they can switch out and drive back and forth until their car gets fixed, cause right now, we're running into. Problems with that, uh, that, it's just like a. Other officers giving up their cars for the other officers, they're driving their cars in for other ones, but if they've. Been out with the car for three or four days, I'm at the mercy of the mechanic. Uh, they try to do a pretty good job, is try to get us the car as much as possible, as fast as possible, but that doesn't always work, and sometimes people have to switch cars. So some of the officers might see someone out of a car for five days, and just say, okay, here's mine. Um, have someone take them home, uh, or have their family member pick them up, so they can drive their personal car back in. And then they're driving that back and forth to work and they're switching cars, so that's why it's important to have a pool car. Um, I think that's what Mike also asked for last year, was for uh, a a car for that particular reason. So the sixty-five thousand uh, that I put there is for a new car, the Dodge Durango is which. The the county is using the Dodge Durangos and the Chevy Tahos now. We're getting away from the Ford Explorers because of all the problems that we're having and the recalls that we're having. So most of the departments are basically now just going with the Dodge and the Chevy Tahos. The Chevy Tahoe is more expensive than the Dodge Durango, so the Dodge Durango is going to run us around brand new out the door, forty-seven, forty-eight thousand. Um, that's not including the equipment that we would have to put on, so you're gonna add fifteen thousand to that. So roughly, that's why I went ahead and requested the sixty-five thousand, uh, that's what that price is for.
Do you have a a long-term plan for your vehicles? How often do you need to rotate them, buy a new one and all that?
Right, so my plan was, once we got it up and running. Uh, cause there was a lot of discussion last year and how we were going to prep for the take-home program and buy cars. So the cut cost, I went and and told the board that, hey, listen, I'm going to try to find some used cars. That's got low mileage, I'm gonna do the best I can, we can get those, and then we'll start that that way, and it'll be cheaper. Then my pro- my thought process in this, because we'll need a pool car, we haven't had one, but we need to get rid of the one car that Mikey's driving. Regularly, because to me, it doesn't need to be driven regularly, because it's just gonna add money to it, but we could turn that into a pool car and get longevity out of that. So what my thought process is, you've got nine cars plus a pool car. If replace the cars based off of. When we start having to pay into that car, that car value isn't worth what we need to, and and the work that we're getting out of it, and we're constantly gonna be dumping money and that. That's when I would wanna replace that car. Hopefully, if I replace this car. And there is one more that I do need to replace, there's gonna be a time where I wanna take off a year, maybe two years, where I don't have to replace a car. Have the uh, uh, meter money, generate more money into there, so it would offset when we do that, because when I started here. We used to take the meter money, and that's what we used to pay the cars with. Uh, Tom would always buy a car every other year, maybe buy two cars every, or in a three years, it was one of those deals. Um, it kinda is kinda the same way, but.
I think it, like, back then, though, we didn't have as many cars to change, so.
That's right.
Because you weren't purchasing, like this, now we got nine, so. That meter money, I don't know is gonna be enough to build up, to transfer to general for those purchases as quickly as.
And also.
You know what I mean?
It costs a lot more out than it did back.
Yeah.
Like twenty-five thousand dollars.
In general anymore, you know, we don't have that safety in general. When I first got here, we purchased those, that came out of general fund.
Right.
It's just, it's hard to, hard to do.
I've got two new ones right now that we bought in twenty twenty-two, those are the two Ford Explorers.
Thanks, Rocky.
Um, the two cars that I, mine is one of the older ones, but I'm okay with driving that because I don't do what they do. Uh, so mine, I can drive until it just falls apart, that's not an issue. But when I start seeing cars that might have a problem, I do know that Chicago has a problem, and that car needs to be put as a pool car. So if we replace that and we bought a new car, we've got a five-year warranty on this car. That car with one person driving it, that's going to last a long time, and we've got a warranty on that. So if I go and purchase a used car where, and that's, this is not an easy task, I've gotta search around everywhere. I was lucky enough to get ahold of Border Patrol, and and was lucky enough to be able to get three cars that they were gonna get rid of, and I worked that deal out and with low miles, which was great. So I'm hoping that that pans out and those cars uh, hold true for a long period of time. Uh, my two cars that I need, but one I need for for next year is the sixty-five to replace that one. If we could go with the new one, that would be great, because I'm gonna get longevity, should get ten years out of that car easy, with one driver, I mean, that should just be a no-brainer. And uh, the warranty's gonna come with that, which I like that. If we go with a used one and I can only get one for twenty to thirty thousand dollars, and it's got thirty to fifty-five or sixty thousand miles on it. I don't know what I'm going to get or how much we're going to be dumping into that, cause at the end of that, we might be dumping in the exact same amount of money if we just went new. So that's my argument, but I'll go either way, whatever the board wants to do with that.
What's the gas mileage on a Tahoe, are they better, like, cause that's a big vehicle.
The Chevy Tahoe that they have is a little bit bigger than the Explorer, it's got the police package, the sheriff's department, what is starting to go with those and the Dodge Durangos. So it's not like, um.
So like, what's the average mileage?
I would say probably roughly the same way with the Explorer, might it might be a little less, I don't know the true numbers to those.
Okay. That's my only concern is gas.
Well, the other thing I wanna make sure that everybody remembered, cause I went over this pretty quickly, is for the local income tax, we're gonna make two hundred and six thousand for revenue. And so far on the budget, without any of these things in yellow put in, there's zeros for all of them, it's a one seventy-six.
That's why I was gonna ask, where can we get money for a sixty-five thousand dollar car?
So if you put sixty-five thousand dollars in here.
You're just dipping into the.
You've now are over what you're gonna be making. Which means that if you wanna approve this sixty-five thousand dollar thing, you now have to dip into your cash resource. Which is an option, it's just that that means that nothing else can be a bond, and that's why I said, what's your number one thing? Cause if the board says, yes, we'll go with this police vehicle, then we don't really need to talk about anything else. Because we're already over budget.
And what's the firearm situation, is that, uh, could that be push, kick, can?
Yeah, I mean, um, I, today's my uh, twenty-three anniversary here. And during that time, when I started out, I used the three fifty-seven revolver with Tommy. And uh, then we switched over to the six tower nine, and then we kept those for that length of period of time, and then when we got to the year, years of. When you're always firing it, the wear and tear, uh, normally, you're looking around ten years, eight to ten years, where you start the, you need to transition. And 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 trade those in and and so forth. So we're at that ten-year range with our weapons, and um, I could push it another year, it's it's still gonna come back around, but uh, yeah, I mean, I can, I can do that. I I just wanna say, oh, when I talk to the firearms uh, to get the quotes and stuff, um, I can't guarantee you what the price will be in a year or two.
Nobody can.
Yeah, but I, but I can tell you right now, he's giving us one hell of a deal to trade out our guns for six thousand dollars and have the buy-in and all those things. So I will say that he did give us a good deal, and I'm sure he could probably do it again, uh, but I can't guarantee you that price will be that low.
So can you work out something between the vehicle and the firearms?
What you're asking.
I think he just said. He's pushing it off for another year.
Well, no, I meant like, look at a vehicle like, but stay lower than fifty-nine thousand, say, cause if he, if he needs the six thousand for the firearms, then. We can only give him like maybe, what'd you say, fifty-nine, you know?
It's not just firearms, it's ten thousand with the holsters, too.
Oh. Oh, okay, I see.
See these holsters?
I got you.
Go with these firearms, so it's really.
Okay, my bad.
I mean, unless you just want them to kind of put them in a lunch bag.
Yeah, put them in a lunch.
Put them, put them in a lunch. So it's actually sixteen thousand for.
Where is the uh, ten thousand for the holsters?
Up here.
Two, where?
Right here.
I don't have that on my list right here.
On your sheet?
No.
Was that included on that one sheet? With the guns? I thought I saw that, too.
But again, I can push that back. Um, uh, I have a one or two in reserve, if something would break, I can do that. I just wanna make the board know that that is going to have to happen regardless, so that's not an item that we would have to, if if you guys wanna say, hey, we don't have that, I got that.
Okay. So then what would be next? Well, I mean.
Oh, I think that was broken down with the uniforms and duty gear, that was the class A's plus the losses, I'm sorry.
Right, that was, that was part of the nineteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty with the vice A.
Yeah, that, those two, the top two go together.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
At least that's what I have written down.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. So, yeah, it's still nine thousand for holsters, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right, it was just broke down.
So there's no need to go over anything else, cause we're gonna do the car.
No.
That's the top priority.
That's his top priority, yeah.
You okay?
Yeah. The only other thing that we talked about during the budget was the furniture equipment for the new police department for Astros. I did turn that back in. I don't have a quote for any of that for the, cause I don't know the uh, measurements, I don't know the final project, I don't know anything, what I can do to. Basically give you a quote for that.
Yeah, there's. Do we have a plan for putting furniture and everything in the new building?
Last year, did we order, did you guys order like? A couple chairs and stuff last year?
Yeah, but it's not a bigger.
I know.
Kinda remember they delivered them here, because we didn't know where to deliver them.
We don't even know if we have the money for construction to even get the three people in there yet, so the answer is, is I don't know. Here it is, is all we got, until we can get in there, I think, would be.
Well, I guess my question to that is, let's say that you start your construction, and you start building, and the construction guy goes, hey. Hey, Terry, this is where we're at, it looks like we're gonna be finished with this uh, here in a month, that's probably gonna be able to move into. Um, to be able to be able to order something in that timeframe, so that when we go to move, we're not moving furniture for one month.
You're not in a hurry, nobody's kicking you out, though, either, so, I mean, we can take.
Oh, true.
And it doesn't take that long to do like an additional preparation or something, so, I mean, basically, we just have to advertise, have a public hearing. So I I don't think that that's, if you get a month's time, I think it's feasible.
I'm just saying, I, off the top of my head, if you're asking me how much I think it would outfit that, I would say on the high end, twenty thousand dollars.
But again, I mean, I'd rather we.
If if you're looking for a number.
I just don't have a, I just don't have anything, I don't wanna put a maybe that is not really on the radar, cause we don't even know what we're looking as far as finishing the place.
We don't know when it'll be.
Well, the other part is that we're just moving offices to offices, there's office equipment in an old PD that can be moved, which is.
Don't wanna make trash into the new building, though.
Pardon?
You don't wanna move bunch of trash crap furniture into a new building.
But it's the same thing with these offices, is we can move these old terrible desks, I got it, and terrible stuff in there and function.
Sure, until.
While we figure it out, while we get our quotes, while we, you know, maybe go into next year and use some of that, I mean, we have, I mean, it's not like we're, we're just, you know. Have to have to buy new equipment, you don't have to.
I guess in my opinion, once he's able to go in there and make a list, do his research, come back with items that he knows that he would need. Then we can look at what the amount is and if we can do it as an additional.
And where we take the money for it.
This year. This year.
But we're not, she's saying when we move in. When we move in.
Talking about the next year or twenty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah, when we move, which makes the most sense, though, if you don't know what you need, you don't know what you need.
Next year, we're gonna do an additional anyway, so, I mean, to me, it's a move.
But for you, an additional would re- you'd rather have a big lump sum, right?
Oh, as far as like to cover?
Yeah.
Yeah, at the end, yeah.
Don't piece me away to death, give me a big lump sum and do one additional.
Yeah, because I think he'll have a better idea once it is close to being done, then he can go in and say, well, I need this, this, and this, he can give us a list with pricing.
And I have to work with the I T guy, too, cause we've got certain things gotta get set up.
Yeah.
So to have that type of a. So to have that type of equipment, so when he's hooking things up and wires, we have that equipment so that we aren't moving and doing this like two times.
Right. And I don't think that'd be a very long time period to get that accomplished. So I'm not too worried.
So on the car, why we need a SUV for be in town?
Which, I mean, I'm open for suggestions on what type of vehicle. It's always been an SUV because of the equipment that we carry. Most of the agency switching from, it used to be the, a car. But the car, all your stuff is constantly in a trunk, which we've got three or four cars now. And a lot of their stuff's in the trunk too. But, um, I've also seen in the past where those trunks leak and fills up with water and screw up a lot of expensive equipment.
Well, Ford's not making any cars anymore.
You, you mean for the police?
Yeah, well, anybody.
Well, the problem with SUVs though is, is that you can't secure your equipment that's in the trunk from the criminal that's in the backseat. Cause as far as I know, there, there's nothing in between your equipment and the person that's sitting in the backseat if they're being arrested. But in a car...
You can put a cage in it.
But you don't have any cages in any vehicles.
You can put a Plexiglas, or you can put a Plexiglas from the seat just to that. It doesn't even have to be the cage portion.
I, I got it, but that's...
And a lot of them are doing that.
But that's not what you have now.
I haven't had the money to do that.
I'm just saying, it's, I, I feel like if we buy an SUV, then that's just another...
That's a part of the...
It's like, I guess you can't take a criminal in it in the back of it. I don't know. I don't know how that works.
And is this an admin car or a function car?
The new one's going to be a, or, um, a functional police vehicle. Every car that I have is a functional police equipment or a vehicle that I have that I'm capable or the, or the funding that I have that I'm operating.
Vehicle, is it, is it going to a specific officer?
Is it going to be a patrol vehicle?
It will be Mike's because that's the car that's bad.
He's got the Chicago car.
Yep.
So Mike's got it.
And Mike lives in Liberty.
Well, the, the one of the things that would make that fair is that, let's say you got nine officers with nine cars and one of them goes bad. It wouldn't be right for me to say, you know what, I'm the chief, I'm taking that new car. I'm going to pass my junker down to you. I'm not going to be that way. If, I don't care if Officer Brown's car, two years from now, needs to be replaced, that car goes to Officer Brown. So it's fair that no one's going to play that, hey, let's just shift all these cars down that way.
I just wish I had some new ones like gas.
Is this vehicle going to be unmarked?
Yeah, it's probably about eighteen.
Mikey's would be unmarked. There's no reason to put decals on it unless the board wants to put decals on it.
Yes, I would like decals on all the cars personally, but I just want to, I just want to make sure. It's, this is going to be unmarked and then, and then the Chicago car is going to be unmarked and then your car's going to be unmarked. So that's three, three out of ten, three out of ten cars are unmarked.
I didn't know if there was a hidden meaning in there.
So we don't have to have...
The full car doesn't have to have any additional money added to it. The police vehicle doesn't have to have a police sticker on the side. If that officer's in fully uniform, state police and every other agency have tons of unmarked cars because we do a lot of work with unmarked cars. So that, that's, doesn't, we don't have to spend five, six hundred dollars to put a sticker on that car.
Gina, sixteen town, twenty highway.
Thank you.
Sixteen town, twenty highway.
The water and sewer?
So is mine, yeah. That's top end.
That's probably the same what we're doing right now.
Yeah. Yeah, cars in town just don't get good cash, no matter what car.
Yeah, right.
That's why I didn't understand why we need a SUV. You're going to be in town. I mean, county, they go out of town. I mean, I can understand why they would.
Well, we also go out in the county and take calls for them too when their, um, officers just worked a PI for the county because they were busy across the county. So we do go out in town. And the SUV is also with the weather here. Um, you never know how bad winter can be. So, I mean, it is good to have those types. We do live in the country. And sometimes our salt trucks and everything, they do a great job. But sometimes the roads are bad and we got to get from point A to point B with what we've got. So I think the SUV is, is, uh, just in that perspective, an important value to that. That's just my opinion.
Mine didn't know they go outside town limit. That's why I questioned it.
Yes. And the officers who drive it also have to get in here to, you know, also. But again, that's, the town's call. So the, the sixty-five thousand being over at the end of the year with the meter money, with that number of what you have up there would be subtracted to, if you use the meter money, that would make that number go down less, or even more because...
If we transferred, that would go to general then.
Right. So that number would go down. We could possibly be able to actually do the car and do the firearm if using the meter money. The town wouldn't have to put in as much because if we use the meter money, then, you know, if there's twenty-five or thirty thousand in there, that would take away thirty thousand off of that, that number.
But the car puts us over by forty, uh, thirty-five. Just the car puts us, puts, puts this fund over by thirty-five.
So the meter money would pretty much break even.
Not be enough. Still not be enough. Maybe be enough, but not totally.
Close to being even.
Yeah, closer than that. And I just want to make sure the sixty-five thousand is the equipment that's bolted down to the car and all the supplies that go inside of it, or just the equipment that's bolted down to the car?
The vehicle or the, the equipment that, that we have in one car, uh, that you guys already bought, that can go into that car. Now, when you're talking about the lights, hardwiring, bolting, things like you're saying, that's what we're talking about as far as the equipment. Because the equipment from one car from an Explorer can't fit on to a, uh, a different year. Cause that's how they make it. If you buy a twenty-twenty-two and then you buy a new Dodge or an Explorer in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, they make them different. So they, you have to buy something different. So you're looking at roughly fifteen thousand dollars for the equipment to add on to that.
How much has the Chicago car been, um, maintained? How much money has been put into that car this year?
When we got that car, I want to think we paid around fif- or fifteen thousand for it. I think we put that into it already over the last couple of years. So we're twenty, thirty thousand into this car. That's why we nicknamed it the Chicago car.
And what's the mileage on that thing? They got it in Chicago. And what year is it?
I wouldn't believe that's a twenty-thirteen or a twenty-fifteen range.
I guess twenty-thirteen.
Twenty-thirteen?
I'm pretty sure.
I think it, you're right, Gina, cause it's the same year as mine.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
And mine has ninety, eighty thousand or ninety thousand on it. It's just an emergency vehicle that we're going to have to use and that thing gets used all the time. So, um, if you're asking me, can I push the gun back? Yes. But I, I do think we need the car.
I suggest that we use the meter money, put it towards that and the car that we need.
Would you be okay if, would he goes to buy a car, he comes back to us and has options? SUV or regular vehicle or?
Yeah, that's why I was questioning it.
Are you okay with that?
Which, like, it has to be a police vehicle.
Yeah, I know.
Right. So the Dodge Durango and the Chevy Tahoe, they're making those.
As, are any regular vehicles, I know Ford doesn't make them anymore, but Chevy or anybody, do they make regular vehicles that are police issue?
I can check and, and see which vehicles they have, um, that, and give you a price for it. Yes, absolutely.
I think that's a good compromise.
I just want to make known that where we live and the conditions of roads and streets do play a factor in movements.
Totally understand.
Okay.
You give the...
I'm okay with that, but I, I'm, I'm not going to approve this unless the car is marked. If it's going to be used for patrol, it needs to be a marked car. So if it's going to be an unmarked car, then my answer is no.
When he's coming with options, did you say it's going to be coming with options?
Why, why don't we put the money there? And then when the need, when he has a car in mind or he comes to us and says, here's the options, we'll look at the options to have it marked. And then we'll have, look at the options to have it unmarked. We can make a decision. But now we have money.
That, to mark a car is not that much.
Well, I'm, but just saying, let's put the money there, then we'll deal with the details at a later date.
This is going to be a no for me unless it's marked.
Right now?
Well, you're dead set on being marked.
Because it's going to be used for patrol. And when you're on patrol, it should be a marked car. If you're an admin, unmarked is fine, no problem. But if Mike Straight is pulling a shift and he's patrolling, the majority of his time is used for patrolling, then it needs to be a marked car so that people know he's out there on the streets. Why would it be unmarked if you're out there patrolling?
Because that's what undercover cops do too. I mean, there's a lot of counties, states, a lot of different organizations do this.
I'm sure they do, but we are a very small community and there's not that much undercover work, I think, that Mike Straight is doing. I think that the majority of his time is spent on patrolling, which is exactly where we need him, exactly what the town needs.
She's been, been during his time on patrol?
No, he, he's admin like me. He takes a shift when he has to or we fill in when we have to. But for the most part, that's what the officers' jobs are. But I will say that I was sitting down here in the valley, um, in the last two months in the dark with an unmarked car and watched people walk by me and not know that that's a car. And you can get a lot of intel using an unmarked car. They're very, very valuable. And we have the same thing in a big town as you do a little town. The drugs are drugs and domestics are domestics and drug dealers are drug dealers.
Again, I think tonight we're just talking money. We're not talking specifics.
I know. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me.
I'm just trying to get home before it turns into tomorrow.
So hungry.
Well, I had the foresight to eat.
I didn't. I didn't have time.
Red's one.
Yes.
Hey, did they?
Yes.
Good job. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about body armor? I don't see any body armor on here, or do I?
Ballistic vests are on it.
Yeah, why are we talking about that if we're not going to have money for, we're just going to do the car?
I just, I just want to make sure the officers have, uh, everybody has body armor? Does everybody have the body armor that they're supposed to have that's been bought in the last five years?
Everybody has body armor because it's an IC state code requirement. If we didn't, we didn't drive.
So was it bought in the last five years?
Yes.
Do you know when it was bought?
Uh, a year, a year or two ago. I would have to ask Gina specifics on the dates on that.
I actually looked through everything. I can't really find any. I looked through all the purchases. I can't find when it was, when they were bought.
All my purchases get through, go through the clerk's office. So I have what she has. I hand it to her solely. So I would say in the last two...
Is it a company or vendor?
I, I, I don't know. I don't know. It's a point blank. But I can get you that and call you tomorrow, Gina, let me know.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we're budgeting for the vests that we need to. But I guess if they've all been purchased within the last five years, then I guess this eight thousand is, can be...
The eight thousand is made for if an officer's out on the street and he gets entanglement, um, with someone with a knife and they cut the vest. That is, can't use it. We have to replace it. So the eight thousand was put on there just in case that we have to replace the vest so that we had the funds so that we could just replace the damaged vest. Because we have to replace it. So having the, that money in that account gives us that, the town knows, hey, if there's damage, we got to replace it. That's what that line item's for. I can go over all the line items.
Well, or you want to, you want to table the vehicle so we can move on or what do you want to do? So we can go to golf next? Cause those are all the decisions for police.
Table to when? The next meeting? Monday?
Well, yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't have to make a decision. We don't have to make a decision on every single thing tonight. Gina would prefer that, but we don't absolutely have to.
Um, even Monday, or I'm sorry, Tuesday, um, things that you would like to finalize, I don't have to actually publish until the eighth.
Okay.
Is that Friday?
So we have our next meeting then?
Yeah, we have, we have, uh, the fifth. So if there's any lingering things, you could even decide on that night and then I have to publish it.
Friday's the fifth, or the eighth.
On September?
Yeah.
Let's, let's table.
So it's out there by.
Is that right?
Yeah.
We'll tell John.
Okay. It has to be ten days before then.
Is there anything else from police?
It's a Friday, so.
I'm sorry.
It's a Friday. It seems, Gina, you're good.
These light items, are they still good, Gina? What, like, like you...
The only ones that aren't are up here and there. So like your standard appropriations haven't changed. It's just those in yellow out of public.
You're going to have to tell me because I can't see that. It's so little.
So your uniforms and duty gear is not...
Nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty.
She got a, oh, there you go. There you go.
See that?
Okay, yes, I can. Thank you.
Oh, here, I can give you that piece of paper.
I, I have one.
Oh, this?
Oh, no, okay, okay.
So this was yours together on that uniform and duty gear.
Gotcha. It's part of the... The backup pager, that's twenty-five hundred, case one breaks, that we can replace that.
We decided to table the vehicle. Is that okay with you? Till Monday?
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you want me to actually put that on the agenda? Did I ask that or can we, do you want me to just bring that?
Budget. Budget.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The cleaning contract, we discussed that at the, uh, I guess the other budget meeting. That came out to about twenty-five hundred. Um, the ballistic vest, the eight thousand is in case I have one or two vests that go down. I need that type of money to be able to replace those if they get into... I need that type of money to be able to replace those, if they get into, like, again, a knife fight, a firefight, something happens where that vest gets torn, I have to replace it. Soon as, it's not something that I can put him on the street without that vest. He has to have that. Reserve training program, I asked three thousand for the reserve program to start that up to end of this year, tried to. With the eclipse coming up, with so many people gonna be in here, I thought, we've always had permission to have five reserve officers on staff. We do not have any right now. I haven't had time to put any effort into that again, so that's what the three thousand is for. And the K nine, obviously, the ten thousand, I asked, I could continue to do fundraisers if the town doesn't wanna put in the ten, I believe we've, we've raised thirteen to fourteen thousand fundraising to try to get to the K nine. The, I don't see anything else on this blue. The firearms was the six thousand, but you asked if I could push that back, I can. The ammunition is three thousand. The, if we did switch over to the nines, the ammunition would be cheaper, so it would save us money on the ammo.
Yeah, that's funded.
Do what?
The ammo is funded.
The department training was eight thousand, that's for on-hand's training, sending people to classes.
It's funded.
Those are the line items. Well, I don't know what's funded or not funded.
The blue is not.
Okay.
Everything else is funded.
Yeah, everything else.
Okay. K nine, reserve programs, not funded.
This is this thing, she's calling this the blue thing.
Yeah, sorry, I gave him the blue sheet. It's right here, this part, these are not, according to his list.
See, it says unfunded.
So basically, if the car doesn't get funded, all I'm, basically, the only thing I'm getting is the line items. And then the ones you have in the blue, those are not being funded. And the other ones are just the line items.
Maybe by, by next Tuesday, if you could put the rest of these in priority order, that would be helpful, if the, if the car isn't gonna get funded then.
Well, everything on the, on this particular.
I think all of you made, I made extra copies for everybody. But I understand it doesn't make sense to you, but I'm not talking about every golf course. But there are, most golf courses don't want people driving through the rough, because that's, that's harder to fix than the fairway. The fairway is the hardest surface, and it's cut very, very tight. So. Just, and none of you have this information, but I thought I'd just share it with you all. The golf course is at four hundred and thirty thousand in gross revenue for the year so far. My projection is five fifty on a low number, and six twenty-five on a high number. It all depends on weather. So I think, I think we've done enough to, to continue to grow the golf course. The golf course is doing well, but I don't have net numbers, and I don't have any of that, that, those numbers, but I thought I'd just share that with you all. I also have a lot of other things to share.
So if you had to rank order your, your requests here, what, what would they, what priorities be? What's number one for you?
Golf cart lease.
What's number two?
Replace the deck.
Three?
Well, it goes hand in hand, finished satellite and golf simulator.
Three A and three B.
Yep. That would be my, in, in that order.
Thank you.
Then I do need to paste, I do need to paint the basement. But that was something that I'll probably buy the paint and the tin house paint and do it.
You shouldn't do that.
I don't have that.
You can get it out of supplies, he has a supplies.
Okay.
It's not like, um.
I thought personally you were gonna.
John.
So, I mean, I see a lot of those everyday line items are already in place.
Okay.
The only question I have on the line item, and that's because I didn't really, you know, I was looking at the canteen stuff, and we were, I think, I, it was thirty-eight thousand. And with the increased menu that I put in place, and I added cheeseburgers.
Yeah, we've already exceeded.
Yeah.
I, I, to be honest, like, I, this year, there were increase, everything was increased as well, so I think it's hard to get a good.
Yeah.
So are we changing this canteen?
Well, it's sitting at thirty-eight, if, if, I mean, we could always revisit it, I'm just saying.
Well, this needs to be our best guess for what information we have today, so if this is not a good number, then let's change it.
Yeah, I don't think it's a good number, to be honest, 'cause I even was too low this year, and we're still going, so.
What do you think? Forty-five?
At least, yeah.
Oh, that would be a good, that'd be a big number.
So that still gives us a lot. So in terms of general, what do you guys?
Twenty-five of that revenue is coming from parking meter, did I, did we talk about that?
Of what? This?
In the general.
Of general?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what you mean.
So.
I don't have those kind of, I don't have that fidelity of numbers.
You don't have that broken down, yeah, so that was just my revenue, so.
One big money.
I would say.
So this is still?
Say you got two twenty-five and one eighty-nine. The only reason I'm mentioning that number is I want you using twenty-five thousand parking meter to fund golf, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. So this is a seventy thousand dollar difference. So if we funded the, what'd you say, the lease equipment and the deck? We could fund the golf carts and the deck, if that's what you guys wanna do. Anyway, we got seventy thousand to play with, and it doesn't necessarily have to be exactly seventy thousand, it can be a little bit more, it's not that big a deal, as long as it's close.
We have reserves, which is helpful.
Yeah. So up to you guys on whether you want to fund all these. Because I, again, general is what we use to fund everything, which is this as well.
Where are we paying for the two things that we have to get to?
What two things?
The non-drainage.
And the cart pad.
It's nowhere.
So.
Unless we decide where it's going. We have to, we are in charge of deciding.
The drainage has to be done no matter what, I feel.
Well, yeah, I think they both have to be done, it's just which one is which. I mean, the drainage, I mean, you, there's a lot of different arguments, the drainage has been like that for a long time. It's probably getting, getting a little bit worse every time it rains, but it's not, it's not an emergency situation where, you know, where, where cars are rushing off the road because of it, because it's, it's just, you can't count on the weather and you have no idea how much rain is coming. Cart, hole number eleven is a big pain in everybody's butt that works there because of all the problems with it, safety concerns.
So you think it's a higher priority than the drainage?
I think that the people that work there would rather have that one done than the drainage, because the drainage is not in our face messing us up every day, but hole eleven makes their life very difficult.
What's the total of the cart pad, the hole? Whatever hole that is.
Eleven, yeah.
I don't think we know exactly.
It's eighty, so it's eighty for construction, and I personally just estimated, because the engineer design for hole fourteen is?
Fifty-something, whatever.
Sixty, I think, fifty-seven, fifty-eight. So that, that engineering design, they came with an exact price of sixty thousand to design it, and then they estimated a hundred thousand to fix it, so that's one sixty.
Yep.
So just, they, the only thing we got for hole eleven was a construction estimate, which is eighty. And so I just thought, well, if that one was sixty, this one maybe is gonna be forty, I'm guessing. So I think that's gonna cost about a hundred and twenty, about, I'm guessing.
Work, we don't have anywhere to get that money?
No.
It's something that has to be done, we feel.
That's correct, in my opinion, yes. We just, it, it has to come from somewhere. I mean, it can come from, it can come from our cash reserves in general.
I'm not a fan of dipping into cash reserves.
So Edit, you did not appropriate, you have that part.
We have a hundred thousand in Edit.
You're talking about this year, I'm talking about next year, what did you put for that?
Two hundred.
What's that improvements, right?
Two forty-six, right.
And you're using a hundred, next year for, did you, did you, I just see improvements there, but I don't know what improvements that we specifically talked about.
No, we talked about nothing, 'cause this is, this is, the two hundred thousand is what you usually use as a catch basin for anything crazy that comes up, and, hey, I need this right away, and it's gonna cost six thousand. You know, when we approved Lexipol, I think it came out of there, you know, these.
Public safety, I don't.
Okay, well, it's.
Edit is more improvements, structure, infrastructure, admin costs for structure.
So if we have to get furniture for the new building?
I would rather not use Edit for that, but.
Where else would you get it?
General, cash reserves.
General, or public safety has a little bit too, yeah. They also have those two funds that are kind of free-for-alls, but there's just not much total, it's riverboat rainy day.
Right, so this is, these two, fifty and forty, we have that also. And we have fifty thousand in ARPA.
It's just.
Buy a couple desks with that.
It's gonna take time to.
We're gonna have to prioritize what's most important, I mean, what's more important, what is most important to us to get fixed? And that's where we, that's where we start taking this money.
What can ARPA be used on?
Anything.
Anything.
Anything?
We took it as a total loss, yeah, revenue loss, so.
Wow.
I think they've lightened the.
I guess. It had a lot of strings when it first happened.
Yeah, they changed a lot.
Wow.
So it's late, if you guys wanna think about golf, think about this slide, and we'll come back on Tuesday and hopefully make some decisions, maybe take the next day or two to ask more questions to people. I don't wanna force people to make decisions this late, it's, everybody's tired.
Well, I have one more thing I have to bring up.
Okay.
As soon as, as, are we moving off of this for right now?
Well, yeah, I was trying to end the meeting.
I just wanna talk about my salary. I know this is a sore spot in some areas, but I make thirty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars, and I'm probably the lowest employee, city employee, and the average in Indiana is fifty-five thousand for a GM, for a golf course, that's the average. The national average is fifty-five, six, that's across the United States. And I have been underpaid for, I don't know, a year and a half now. And I'm requesting an increase, and, and, without a doubt, and I think I've proved my worth, and I'll continue to do that, but this is something I would like this to be considered.
How much? Are you asking for?
No less than fifty. And that's three thousand dollars less than Brett made.
I say make it up to fifty-three, make it even out of it.
Well, we're new here. We have to be very careful.
Yeah, but like you said, if you don't, if you don't pay them, they're going somewhere else, that's just how it is.
They get insurance benefits too, which are a good cut.
Thirty-nine thousand ain't much for anybody.
Plus, it don't pay anything for insurance, that's a benefit that they don't pay for.
Right, so, I mean, I think we really, we have to think about it as a whole, so it needs to be upped in the wages, so you can see the number where it puts us.
Well, I mean, we, we could talk about the insurance, it's six, three thousand dollars deductible before you can even get anything covered.
But you don't pay out of pocket for anything, for the premiums, the town covers the premiums, so it's kind of a wash, basically.
So did you do any, any looking into?
Oh, here, here's, well, listen.
Hold on, let me finish.
Okay, I thought you were going right where I was going.
No, I'm not finished, I was asking a question. I would like to know if you did any research into municipal golf courses in towns that are twenty-five hundred people? 'Cause that's what the real comparison is. Taking an average in Indiana is not helpful for us, because we are rural, and we are small, and we happen to own this huge golf course. So is it possible for you to find golf courses that are municipally owned, that are in towns that are equivalent to our, our size? And that's it, yes.
Yeah, seventeen percent is my percentile of my wage, and that's.
Can you answer the question?
I just did, no, I don't have that information, you, I would have.
Could you find it?
You want me to call all these golf courses in Indiana? When I got, I got the advertising here for you.
Talking what's a fair wage, you know what I'm saying? Like, if you wanna be comparable to, like, that golf superintendent position, but, I mean, we have to be, we have to make it feasible, because we have.
Well, I did.
You know what I mean, like, we have to make it feasible.
I'll give you your information.
Gina gave me a list today, I just happened to ask about.
I just Googled it.
I know. Did you? I'm sorry, that was just more work for you. Anyway, I have a list of municipal-owned courses.
Wonderful, what do they, what do they make?
Oh, I didn't look that up, I was looking at, for my purposes, for other reasons.
Ron, I can show you, it goes in the gateway, and it has compensation for municipal employees. And so once you know what these municipal courses are, I can show you how to get in the gateway, and you can research what they make. It's like a golf pro in Tipton would make like.
Fifty-eight?
Fifty-eight thousand, and that's a population sixteen thousand, so it's hard to compare us to a city like Tipton, because their population is so much higher, which means their revenue is so much greater. But, what I'm saying, if you can find some figures to help, give them an idea of where we should be, that's the best.
Well, I mean, I, I'm looking at a hundred and seventy-eight acres that I'm responsible for, and I'm responsible for all these employees, and I'm bringing in revenue.
No doubt you have a big job, but.
And that's what I'm saying, but we are so new, it's a big sentence.
Go ahead, huh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I understand you have a big job, and I appreciate the job that you're doing, I, I know the whole town does, but we have to base salaries off our tax base, and our tax base is only the limits of the town of Brookfield. And that's, that's a reality, even if, I mean, you know your golf course is not even in our town, that's how crazy it is, but this is all we've got, is this little tiny tax base, and that's where the money comes to pay everybody's salary. So that's why you have to, that's why I wanna know.
And your revenue is generating that too, but it's also paid for the course, the, the day-to-day, so I think you guys have to come up to a, a number that's feasible.
So fifty's not feasible?
I didn't say it wasn't. I'm just saying, I want a number that's.
I think that thirty-nine is definitely not feasible.
Right.
I would just like some backup information to help justify that decision, that's all I'm asking for, if that's possible. Is there anything else to come before the board during our budget meeting?
No, we're going home.
I'd like to enter your motion to adjourn.
We're gonna figure out salary to.
I'd like to table that till Tuesday.
Okay.
Does anyone want to second my motion to adjourn?
So.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried, means adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Hey, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.